Okay, everybody ready? Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, July 10th, 2023. Before we stand for the pledge, I'd like to let to all of you know we will have just a brief moment of silence. We had a teacher, Gina DiLoreto, pass away from Garfield a few weeks ago, and we would just like to just take a moment of silence for her. So please rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Veronica, we call the roll, please.
Kelly McKay.
Here.
Mr. Ratliff.
Here.
Mr. Weibley.
Here.
And Mrs. Dyer.
Here.
Thank you.
And Mr. McKinnis.
Okay. We will go on to treasurer's report. Motion to approve the minutes from June 20th. Do I have a motion, please? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, motion to approve the following financial terms: June 2023 financials, including FYE information, June financial report, checks written, and fund balances. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. We come now to the hearing of the public. But I don't know that anybody signed in, so if anybody wanted to speak, we're moving on. All right. Item five, additions or deletions to the agenda. Are there any? Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Old business, we have none. Item seven is approval of the Marion City School Handbook. Superintendent recommends that approval. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to say that in looking at the handbook, the preschool handbook, I am very pleased with the contents of the handbook. It's very thorough, very well thought out. I like how the curriculum is explained, and I am thinking that, you know, when parents get this handbook, or anyone gets this, it will be easily comprehended by any that picked that up. So I was really impressed by the contents, the structure, and the explanation of what great opportunities we have in Marion City Schools.
And Kevin, I'm assuming you've had?
Input.
Input in your team?
Yes.
Good. All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, Harding High School Overnight Volleyball Camp. Superintendent recommends approval of an overnight camp for Harding High School Girls' volleyball students, student athletes, in Marion from July 27th through July 28th. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So the overnight thing is in Marion?
It's in the building.
It's in the, okay, because they did that last year, okay.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item 8A, SRO contracts. This is for $245,380, paid for through ESER funds. Superintendent recommends approval of a contract between the Marion Police Department and Marion City Schools for four school resource officers for the 23-24 school year. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I think it's just a typo perhaps. If we look at page one at the top, it refers to 23-24 school year for elementary, then if we go down to number one, it does mention at the tail end of that sentence, at elementary schools. Then on page two, it mentions Grantville School to pop, but if you look at number one, it still reads elementary schools. And then the same on page three for the high schools. So I guess just number one on page two and three wouldn't need to be changed.
We'll get them to fix that.
You got it.
All right, so then the motion would be with those corrections. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right. Item 8B, Specialized Education of Ohio. Superintendent recommends approval of a master service agreement for the 23-24 school year between Marion City Schools and Specialized Education of Ohio, who operates High Road School of Marion County. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item 8C, Keys to Literacy. In the amount of $28,645, budget source is a comprehensive literacy state development grant. Superintendent recommends approval for the purchase of keys to literacy, professional development, and materials for the 23-24 school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, do we need to go into executive session regarding the consent calendar? I'm gonna love this meeting. Amendments to Consent Calendar, do I have any things that need to be amended? All right, we'll go now to Consent Calendar Approval. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered by the Board to be routine and will be enacted by the Board in one motion in the form listed below. The Board will follow Board Policy 0165.1, Section E, in regards to the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. So now we come all the way over to item 13. So we have future board meetings listed here. We do have a special board meeting on July 13th, and I would invite you all to come to it. It's a board retreat with some planning going on. At 4:30, though, the micro-farm is doing a ribbon cutting, I believe, and there will be lots of things to see and do, and it's right behind us at Harding High School, so I invite all of you to attend. Should be a great time. I'm hoping the Lawrences will be here. So I did extend that invitation to them. All right. Item 14, Final Reading and Approval of Board Policies. Superintendent recommends the final reading and approval of the following board policies: Technical Corrections, two that we are rescinding regarding volunteers, a new policy, 8120 for volunteers, school safety policy at 8400, emergency situations at schools, policy 804020, and advertising and commercial activities, policy 9701. Do I have a motion, please? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Are we voting on these as a whole?
Yes.
Because 8120, I do not agree with. 8120 is the one that we talked about potentially covering volunteers. If they're gonna volunteer for us, covering the expense of being licensed. I think Mr. Board Member McKinnis had asked for maybe a cost benefit or a cost analysis of that. Also, it has a number of crimes, depending on the year, that I would be okay with a coach, coaching. So I can't, if we're gonna vote as a whole, I can't vote for 8120. But if we vote separately, I can vote for all of them but 8120.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to, I know we briefly discussed it last time in terms of if we were able to pick up, especially for the coaching and pupil activity permit, upon completion of the season. If they completed it, then the Board could potentially pick that up, and if we had asked the athletic department what's the potential cost of that, I don't know if that was done. But I think it's something, again, as we mentioned last month, with the paying to volunteer kind of kills the, I guess, the incentive to do so. And I'm not sure how many volunteer coaches we have and how expensive that would be, but I think it would send the right message, hey, if you wanna help our kids and help our programs, and if you stick it out through the season, we can pick this up for you.
Olympia, do you have any?
Um, yes, I did provide an update to the Board. It was in the administrative content section.
Is that the link I couldn't open? I don't want anybody else to have trouble with that. I wasn't able to, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I can share it if it will provide information.
Information, is that the administrative file?
Yes.
Give us a second.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to.
So we had seven volunteer coaches this past year. And it says, in the past, we've charged volunteers for their background checks. Now with the people activities permit requirement for athletics, our suggested process would be, number one, Marion City Schools covers the cost of background checks for volunteers, which is $45. Number two, volunteers cover the cost of their PAP. Volunteers need to submit their own PAP applications directly through ODE. The cost of the PAP is $45 for three years, $60 for four years, $75 for five years, and this process would allow Marion City Schools not to have to reimburse the volunteer. Number three, sometimes volunteers do turn into paid coaching positions for that following year, so you have to consider paying for the PAP, and we're not paying for our coaches' PAPs. And it just says, in regards to the last, the list of the offenses in the policy, those are suggested by Neola and are guided by ORC, and then you could read directly from the ORC how they came up with those things that are listed. Not to say that you couldn't come up with a different process here, but that is what's recommended by Neola's team.
Is it possible to just table this one? And I had an error message, you're not sure to contact, but it's not.
Do you know how to log in?
Yeah, and I just couldn't.
You couldn't log into the Board docs?
Correct.
I'm looking.
I mean, under that explanation, we're, the volunteers are still paying, so we don't really help them out. So I'm still a no. And under that, it's just a recommendation from some company. Again, I'm still a no. So that explanation offered nothing to change my mind. As to 8120.
Scott, what are your thoughts?
Are we able to vote on them separately?
How about we vote on 8120 separately?
Yeah.
Or we can table it?
I'd like to table it if it's okay. I don't, I mean, it's, I know it's
Okay.
Take care of the coaches soon.
So the motion is for all the policies other than 8120 to be tabled. All, everything will be voted on, hopefully approved, and then we'll discuss 8120 at the next meeting.
Or Thursday, yeah, Thursday or whatever.
We could do it Thursday.
Yeah.
Are we at the discussion piece? Is that where we are? Because I'm wondering too, like, if you're a volunteer, do your spouse or significant others get free admission into the contest in which you are volunteering? Because to me, that would add up to a significant amount, which might, you know, curtail that amount and which, that $45, because I think it costs like maybe, what, $5 to get into if you're at the middle school? If you're coaching or, I don't know, I haven't paid in so long.
But the 45 is just the background check amount.
I know, but what I'm saying, if we wanna pick.
Then you have to put another, let's say, 300 behind that.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if we want to pick up that charge, but we are allowing free admission into the athletic contest or whatever that they volunteer for, do those costs kind of wipe out each other? So like $45 would be like admission into eight athletic contests, or, because as employees of Marion City Schools, we get free admission into, you know what I'm trying to say?
I get it, I just don't see how we ask someone to donate their time, and oh, by the way, you have to pay us to donate your time. I mean, it definitely cuts down on the number of people that wanna participate, and we don't have that many. We got like seven, and I don't see that growing exponentially in the future. I mean, it, seven over a couple hundred bucks in a $54 million budget is nothing. So I don't, I don't, we should be doing something to encourage and, and, and ask people to volunteer, but under this, we're asking the volunteer, oh, by the way, if you're going to, you have to have this permit, which is 300 some dollars.
It's 40, it's $45, isn't it?
Forty-five.
The permit, there's other.
Forty-five dollars is a background check.
For just a background, then you have to pay.
No, it's not $300. It's a three-year permit. Forty-five dollars for three years. Yeah, 45.
But the background check's not the only thing. Then you have to take classes. So if you don't sign up at certain classes, you have to pay for it out of pocket. I've paid these fees, so I know it's not $45.
Can I just offer a recommendation that this be referred back to the policy committee?
Yep.
We have a meeting on July 19th, and possibly Mr. Weibley and Mr. McKinnis can come up with another proposal.
That works for me, and I think we already have the motion to table it. Okay. All right. So we're voting on everything but 8120. Do I have, and we need, we have a motion and a second. So call the roll, please.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Okay. I don't think any of the committees are meeting right now in the summer.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
I think, did you guys get this information about House Bill 33? There were several bullet points. The one that I found most interesting is House Bill 33 amends the mandatory retention under the law. Did you guys see that? The third grade guarantee to permit a student to be promoted to the fourth grade. If the student's parent guardian consults with the student's reading teacher and principal, and they agree that the student's promotion, regardless of whether the student is at grade level, and requires the student to continue reading intervention services, I think in third grade, aren't they reps, right, Krista? Until the student reads at reading level. So I found that to be very interesting because of the fact of so many students have anxiety about whether or not they will reach that magic score that will allow them to be promoted to fourth grade. So I found that to be very interesting in the House bill, and I think we all got this email, considering those specific changes. And as Mr. McKinnis mentioned at the last board meeting, there are so many things that are happening that are going to affect us, not only as a district, but as a school board. But as a former third grade teacher, I found that to be very refreshing, and I know it's gonna take the load off of a lot of anxious third grade students.
Was it passed by the Senate?
Did you get this?
I'm looking at it right now.
The biennial budget by Governor Dewine?
Yeah. Okay. Has mandatory, okay. All righty, well, keeping an eye, they're on recess now. The House and the Senate are on recess. So hopefully, nothing new will happen over the summer, but you never know. All right, we'll go on to item 16, information and discussion items, and this is regarding the property at 240 West Church Street, and that is also known as the WEC, the former recreation center. So at this time, can we open up a dialogue about what we would, if we rent this, the cost of the rental, and also what we would do with it? Because I'm not certain what we're gonna do with it. And the cost would be?
Well, the old lease, it was about $20,000 a year.
Yeah.
Plus fire systems and some other things.
And you said the roof is, and we would be responsible for fixing the roof even though it's a city property?
But I guess it's in pretty bad shape according to what Jake told us today.
So bad that it's unhappable?
He said that the drywall was all stained and falling down, but I, Jake would have to answer that question.
And don't we have a meeting soon with Jake?
Yeah, I think, yeah, this month. He set something up, I think, like the 20th or something? Not positive on the date, but.
So maybe.
Said a couple weeks, at like 12:30.
Because I saw him.
You wanna add it to the agenda?
For facilities?
Because why don't you tell them what your idea is about?
I think right now, I mean, right now, we've put a lot of money into that building, so it could be used for a lot of different activities, community activities, things for our kids. I know some of our kids have used it in the past for indoor tennis and so forth. It has a gym component, so I think there's a lot of things that we could use, as well as, you know, education classes, adult education classes and so forth. But we're gonna have to make a, obviously, budgetary stuff is gonna be coming up at some point in the future, and there is no way that I am going to be forward keeping us out at the county building. This allows us to then have a building for us into the future, but in the meantime, it could be storage, it could be a lot of stuff. You know, because there's just no way we're gonna be able to afford, in my estimation, the county building that our administration is currently in. It would allow, if that would be a avenue, plus the building for what we get in real estate is cheap. I mean, even if we rented it out to different activities, the groups wanted to put on, I think we could recoup some of our money back, so.
And I know that the leadership group from the chamber had approached when Dr. Irucci was here, and I think you've had conversation with them, that would, they would have a plan to utilize the building for different after-school activities.
Which is in the center of downtown, right by the police station. I mean, it's a nice place for something like that, for sure.
So, so you've added it to the agenda, and then maybe?
And I can reach back out to that, to the group at Leadership Marion.
Yeah, I think Erin Slater's on maternity leave, though she just had a baby, so.
One of the things that we had looked at as a board 30 years ago, when we knew that the administration building on Center Street was just being squeezed, we, there could be architectural drawings somewhere of expanding that, so our administrative offices could be in that space, because that's a, that's a very nice space, but it does need expansion. I don't know if that would be a bond issue we'd have to get approved, or if.
I'm sorry, what space?
It's the Student Services Building.
Church Street.
Oh, Church, yeah. So it's the old ad building, but it is very tight.
You're talking about people that just moved from one space.
I know, I know.
Olympia is still recovering. I was in her office today.
Don't get too worried. It would take some time to plan, and it would take some money. I don't know that we have the money. We know we don't have the money.
We won't then.
But, right, so it would be something, though, to look at at some point. We used to have some, a trailer or two, because we did some.
Oh, God, not the trailers again.
I'm going way back. I don't wanna do trailers, just so everyone knows. But thinking about that space and seeing if it could be reconfigured to offices, the boardroom was there, but it's very, very small, and so as long as we have this space, I think we would stay here. But it was something we looked at, and I don't really recall what happened to that idea. But it might be, that's another additional piece of property that we own. That wouldn't take a ton of money, but it is, I know it's tight in there.
Yeah, but we have so many administrative offices.
Right.
I don't, you were just there recently, right?
Yes.
What were you thinking? To put everybody in there, like everybody?
You'd have to expand it.
You'd have to, from what we have at the DNC, you would have to expand it to fit everybody.
Right.
And that's our property where we put the Y-trees too, right?
Yep, that's all ours. So it would need expansion for sure. I don't know how much.
Now, you have those two open rooms that you could definitely reorganize in there.
Yeah. You know, that was an idea 20-some years ago.
The 20th is the Facilities Committee meeting.
20th.
But that might require, I mean, we may need to, at some point, think about a small, very small bond issue that would improve that building, and, and really, that would be the only thing to do, but that's just me thinking outside the box a bit, and I don't want anybody to think I'm ready to raise their taxes, because it'd have to be voted on, number one, and it's just a thought, number two. So, all right. So we'll continue that discussion into committee for the WEC.
So that will go to the Facilities Committee?
Okay. All right. We do need to go into executive session regarding our treasurer's search. I think that was it. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weibley?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. I do expect action after our executive session in terms of setting the treasurer's salary for the search.
For that first.
We don't need action. Glad you're here, Veronica, keeping me in line. All right. All right, we're now going to head into executive session. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. This is the fastest board meeting we've had, 30 minutes. I mean, I know John Mullins is very happy.
Don't speak too soon. Now jinxed, now we're jinxed.
Y'all are killing me. All right. Thank you. Have safe travels going home.